I'd like to call this meeting to water.
Mr. Danglin?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Yeah.
Dr. Vogt will be a little late. Dr. Selly?
Yeah.
Mrs. Willis?
Here.
And I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. At this time, Lieutenant Shirley?
Yes.
Please come on. Thank you. You're welcome.
How are you, Mrs.? Good, good. I, uh, normally I do IT stuff, but I had to print it today. Because the clerk was mad at me with the board on. It's like, everybody's a target.
Thanks, Charlie. Thanks, Charlie.
Uh, yeah. Before Lieutenant Shirley gets going, over the past several months, we've had discussions on and off, and I've had inquiries from members of council about looking into some modifications of our current parking programs throughout the residential areas of the city. So Lieutenant Shirley and the Police Department have done what I think is a really, an extensive survey of many of our residential areas based on the different types of situations and restrictions that we have in place. I've distributed to each of you basically a summary of each of the surveys and to try to break down what is really a lot of information that was obtained. If you saw all the pie charts with all the options that were presented to the residents and the different responses, we thought we met and we just thought it would be a little TMI, too much information, to really get down to what this all boils down to. So you have a summary before you and a memo that I have out, and I broke it down into very simple categories. And Lieutenant Shirley will now explain the different areas, and if you can, you'll probably be able to just follow along on the sheet that I provided to you, and it'll correspond, and that should help you in making the decision as to how we move forward to try to help our residents out with some of their parking woes. So Lieutenant?
How are you guys? So just because this is my first time doing this, just the way it works so that you guys have an understanding of why we're here and how we're here. So the administrator asked me to look at something, and then once we work together and come up with something, we then present it to you, and then it's up to you whether we want to take action, don't want to take action, or if you want more information, and we'll come back with that. So this is more just information so that you guys can make good decisions. That's why we're on here. So one of the first places we started was, any of you guys that have been in the area know the Elbron section. Parking, you know, I've been on the job now for, you know, a little over 22 years, and this section that we're talking about, which if you look at your first slide, it's the ones that are highlighted, Jersey, Kirby, Oakley, Berg, Clarence, and Highland in those sections. Those, the reason we looked at them is because we get a lot of phone calls from residents, both people that live there year-round and then also people that rent in the area. And the requests that they have are so varying that we wanted to make sure that we had a full understanding of what was needed or wanted in these areas. So Mr. Jackson asked me to take a look at it. I can tell you that in these areas, we absolutely touched every resident. We sent out certified letters, and for everyone we got back, we hand-delivered them, and if we couldn't hand-deliver them, we actually looked them up in our computer systems and then found them in Brooklyn or wherever else they lived and got the notice to them somehow, emailed it to them. So you're going to see during our things, during the slides, that they definitely got the notice. Whether they chose to respond is another option. So we did have a bunch of people who just chose not to respond. So those are the streets. Just, the next one is just to give you an aerial of the area so you understand, you know, what's going on in that area. So that area is, you know, surrounded by, you know, portions of the lake, there's a ball field, obviously the university is a big portion of one side of it. So those are the streets that we're talking about, and they just have some issues that other areas of the town don't have, which is why they had parking restrictions in the past. So if you go to the next page, this is, for all of those streets, I combined it in just one simple graph just so you can understand. The, you know, I was asked to do the surveys, and my recommendation back to you guys is, the results are so scattered, I wouldn't do anything, I would leave it alone. You know, a lot of times when you touch things that have results like this, you end up creating more problems than what you try to solve. So if you look at what the responses are here, basically there was a large chunk that got notices and chose not to respond, but of the ones that did choose, they wanted some type of a prohibition or something in place. So if you combine the yellow and the blue, you can see that they wanted something. So right now, they do have restrictions, I would just leave them alone, that would be my recommendation to you guys. But we wanted to look and make sure that, you know, that residents got a say, and I got to tell you, one of the biggest things that I got, and I was telling the mayor yesterday, was people were just thrilled that we were out there and making contact with them and asking them what they wanted. Regardless of whether we do what they want, that was the biggest comment, just thank you for asking and trying. So that was a big part of this. So that's the first one. As we go into the next one, it's a exact opposite situation. So these are the areas, I'm just calling it the promenade area. This is Ocean Terrace, Marine Terrace, and Seaview Avenue, and then Ocean Avenue North, which travels in front of Seven Presidents' Park. So we treated this sort of as one area just because we were looking at it and surveying the residents. And if you look at the next slide, there's an aerial just showing you that it's around Seven Presidents' Park. I'm sure most of you know where Ocean and Marine Terrace are. There's some interesting zoning issues that have happened over the years there. There are a lot of residents there that don't have driveways. So what happens is it's so close to the beach, it's not like they have an option, and we had an issue a week or so ago about someone that got a ticket, but she was like, "I don't have a driveway, I can't get it off the road for you." You know, she was asked to get it off the road for something we had, and she just couldn't do it, there was nowhere for her to park her car, you know, and so, you know, we worked with her and worked it out. But, so, certain areas of town, we do have these zoning issues from the past that sort of creep up on us, and so what's happening is it's so close to the beach that people just flood that area when they go to the beach, and then they walk down and they get on the beach for their, you know, annual beach passes or whatever else they do. So if you go to the next slide, you can see overwhelmingly, they're begging for some type of a resident parking situation, which, you know, the traffic department's recommendation is going to be for the residents there is to, all we're asking is to let us work with them and come up with some type of a program. In the past, we've always pushed away from this and said, "We can't do it," but the truth is, right about when you guys got in office, right when you first got here, right, Mayor? We came up with a program that we found that allows us to do it. So prior to this, it would have been impossible, and I always used to push back on this and say, "We can't," because first they have to go to, you know, the tax records and find out who lives there, and then they'd have to go to code enforcement, then they'd have to come to the Police Department for a permit. This new system that, and we already have it, basically the meter guy, Nicky Pachero, will run this program, and what he'll do is, it's online, they go on and they put certain documents in, whether we're asking for a copy of their registration, a copy of their driver's license, just to verify that they're a resident there. Whether they own the house or they're renting, a copy of the lease, you know, a certified copy of their lease, scan it on there, and what ends up happening is, Nicky will vet through them and either approve or deny them, and then the payment will be made, and then he will actually put the decal on their cars. I'm sorry?
You got the decal.
Yeah, and I'll show you, I did some mockups, so I'll show you at the end of the presentation what this would all look like. But at the end of the day, all we're really here to do is see if you'd be interested in letting us sit and talk with the residents and come up with a program. It's something, as you can see from the survey here, they're really asking for, and there's only so many spaces, and there's a lot of residents in that area. All we're doing is now, we're creating an area where instead of them fighting against the entire state coming here to go to the beach, they're just amongst themselves. The residents can work out the parking situation, because it'll be residents only. And then after the meter season, it will go back to regular parking. So it'll only be during the metered season when we'll do it.
And we're talking about like a total of about 46 or 50 people? Just looking at the number of responses?
Yes, exactly, exactly. So it's a small little nook in the area there, if you ever drove through that area.
So how this all came about is, I'm literally thinking, it went back in June, I think Mary Jane could, you know, would agree, and probably you've heard from residents before, even before we came into office, is, you know, there was just always a lot of talk of, you know, just the issue, the parking issues throughout the city, and residential parking was always something that was brought up. And as Lieutenant brought out, you know, for whatever reason, there was some resistance, obviously it was difficult to put in place. So I had, there was a gentleman, and I don't remember his name, who did that big study, but he was a neighbor in Red Bank, and I met with him one day. Unrelated, I said, "Well, what about parking?" And they have had residential parking, I think, in both Red Bank and in Asbury Park for quite some time. So Lieutenant looked into it, in fact, they did, and that gentleman at the time told me in Red Bank, it's, you know, it's, it was working out. And then coincidentally, when you did your research, you started to find out that there was this inexpensive software that basically solved all the problems. So the idea was, okay, look into it a little further and see what we could come up with and see if it's something that we might want to consider. So that's where we are.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so as we move on to the next one, as we were dealing with these, I kept, it's funny, I kept going back to Mr. Jackson, either he'd get a phone call or I would, and we decided, okay, as we're getting complaints about parking, let's put it all together. So Buttonwood Avenue, which is a separate issue, but we were getting, the residents there were begging us, there is a section of Buttonwood Avenue that for years, people can't park on. It's wide enough, we don't understand or know why the restriction was done, but it was done years ago, so we again did a survey there, and as you see in the next page, it was overwhelming. The residents are begging us, you know, only one person voted against it, and 16 said, "Please, you know, let us park on our street." I spoke with Stan Juva, he has no issue as far as PPW or plowing, and he said, you know, "Let the residents park there." So that was overwhelming, and even, all of these things, you know, I tried to break this down very small to you, I have single sheets of every single resident, what they requested, what they wrote, so, you know, later on, if you guys have anything further, you can call me and I can tell you what happened or what the things are, but this is just a very quick snapshot of what the answers were. But it was overwhelming on Buttonwood.
Excuse me, with this?
Yes, sir.
With this apartment building?
Yes.
On Buttonwood?
Yes.
Was it some of the concern that they would have, you know, all of the vans, you know, looking for a place to park?
Right.
So now when you're, you know, backing out your street or whatever, with all those, if we change this, then all those vans, you know, they're almost an obstruction when you're trying to come up to driveway?
Yeah, but I mean, like I said, it was overwhelming, the residents all wanted. I mean, so if residents were saying, "Oh, you know, this is something we don't want," but most of them, they have, and if you look at Buttonwood, it's again, they're small houses with small driveways, so once you have a wife, you know, a wife and two children, or even one child, it's three, four cars, they literally are parking on their lawn and they're getting tickets for it because there's nowhere for them to park their cars, and they're saying to me, "Well, why is it restricted? The next street over is the same exact width, and they can park on both sides."
So this is what, the homeowners?
The homeowners, yeah, the homeowners is the next page, yeah, exactly, that's the vote.
Not the, uh...
We didn't, we did not, we don't do that, no, we did not.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question, I'm glad you said that. So we did not survey the actual apartment complex, because it's just apartments, we, this is just homeowners.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, thank you for mentioning that.
So the idea is what, that the apartment houses might have a house and a van that they're then going to put on the street and not keep in their working lot?
Well, yeah, the complex there, you know, the renters there, there was a concern that they would basically take over the street with all the vans.
Because, because once they fill up the lot, or they may not even allow them to have those vans.
Or it could be, right, or it could be, it could be other people who just say, "Hey, well, there's another place where I can park my vans overnight, and they'll come get it tomorrow."
And the interesting part, it's why we didn't include them in the survey, because they would have had an unfair amount of votes of the apartment, so they didn't get any votes. This is all just single-family residents that voted, not one from the apartments.
So they can apply for a permit?
Well, no, this is apartment, this is a separate issue, that's why, yeah, this is just to open that up and allow. Yeah, I know.
It was work, it was complicated.
Right, we, we simplified this as much as we could.
Yeah, we just want to say, okay, then come down the road and say, like Bill says, "I don't want vans parked in front of my house."
Yeah.
I mean, so like, we open it up.
And I get that, but like, literally, almost 100% of the residents said, "Let it happen." They know, and it was part of the conversation, they know the apartments are there, they think that's why it happened in the past, but they don't know, and we've had these conversations with the residents.
And the restriction is only one side?
It's only one area, one side.
One side and a short portion of it.
Correct.
About, probably 65% of the street is permitted.
Yeah.
It's just one section.
It's actually why I wrote, I did this picture for you, if you look at it, you can see the section that's not, so cars are parked everywhere except this one side that's closer to you. From the last car that's parked there, he pulled right up to where you can, all the way to Grand Avenue, that's the section we're talking about.
I mean, but Bill Merrick makes a good point.
Yeah.
And be clear that it's separate from this other urban parking issue.
Yep, absolutely. It was one of those things, definitely if it was split, if this was 50/50, we'd say the same thing, leave it alone, but it was 16 to 1, it was an overwhelming amount, and they came to us, it's not like we went to them to deserve it, we got phone calls on this. The next two issues that I want to talk to you about, it's just, it's really cleanup issues, they're from before you guys got here. So when Pure Village and Beachfront North were built, the ordinance, and it's currently in there right now, the city has in the ordinance that there is a residential parking program that we were supposed to offer to them. And so in doing this, you know, this is the thickness of the ordinance we're talking about, so I'm going through it, and as I'm asking for this stuff, we're just trying to clean it up and really come up with changes. So in Beachfront North, if you can look at that real quick, the areas in which I circled in red, right now, not something I'm asking for, right now, in the current ordinance, it allows for us, it actually, it says that we have to, provide resident parking for Beachfront North homeowners in these areas. So we sat down with the HOA, the homeowners, and the attorney, they went back and forth, they had a bunch of votes, and they're actually, I have a letter of support that I gave to the administrator, that they're allowing us, or they're going to agree with us to, when I hand all these changes to Mr. Renone, to remove that from the ordinance, they don't want the residential parking, which is good, because we don't want, we generally don't want anything on our ordinance that we're not doing, it just doesn't look good for us when someone comes forward. So we have a letter from their attorney and the HOA saying, "Go ahead and remove it." So I'm just going to suggest to you that we, while we can, we remove it.
Is this the same area that we met with that gentleman, like, back in...
That's Pure Village, we'll get to that next.
Yeah, that's the next one.
I'm way off.
Yeah, no, that's all right, that's all right. You're there though, from MacClanlais.
We had a set of, we had a conference.
We're ordinance of practice.
Well, we did, we met, we agreed, but we didn't have this discussion.
That guy was the stop sign. That was the stop sign.
The guy with, no, it's not what I was talking about, there was an older gentleman that we met on a Wednesday night.
That was Pure Village.
That was Pure Village?
Yeah, that was Pure Village.
He's the guy, same ordinance, same ordinance, yep, same ordinance, he's the next page.
Okay, thank you.
So that would belong.
So the same exact ordinance, same exact line, just number B, the same thing says that Pure Village were supposed to do it. So if you come off the boulevard and right down the middle of the project, Chelsea Avenue, where you can only approach it when you're going northbound, the first section there, before you get to Landmark, where you can see where I circled, that, and then as you make the right, as you go down Landmark, that surrounds that residential building, so understand that the main portion of Pure Village that comes east of that, those are all for rent, whereas the building that these reds surrounding, those homes are owned by people. So when they did this, they had offered them a residential parking program. The gentleman you're talking about came forward to us, and he, this is why you don't want it, because he said, "It's in your own ordinance, you're not giving it to me, I want this. It says it in your ordinance, why don't you do it?" So we sat down with the management from Pure Village, we're just going to clean up a little bit of the language so that it fits for us, and we're going to suggest to you guys that we do some type of a residential program here, I'll work with Mr. Jackson on it, and just follow the ordinance once we clean up the Beachfront North one, and we'll start issuing, you know, just to homeowners that can prove they own homes in that one building of Pure Village. They have to be in the HOA, and they're going to have to go through the same process.
Now, this weekend, and it's going to happen in the summer, we have a problem with the valet park, I don't know if anybody called about it?
I don't think we have one anymore.
Yeah, because it slows down the traffic for, all the way out to the ocean.
You won't get it.
I don't know if you heard about it?
We heard a lot about it. It was in the next 24 hours.
I had conversations with the management.
And that valet park was just slowing down everything down to Ocean Boulevard.
So Pure Village was contacted today, and they were told to, that they are not allowed to set up valet anymore, and that they have to come up with a new plan and submit it to traffic for approval, but they're not to be in the middle of Pure Village.
I stay here.
I want to, you know, give the council, for those that don't know what the background is for that.
So the background of it was that, when I first started doing this, there used to be two valets, there used to be one in front of the avenue and one in front of McLusen, and then it just, it created a mess, you know, whenever someone pulled up the valet, it blocked everything, and then the flow was gone. So we only got it changed two years ago, where myself and Tommy Houston, if you guys know him, he's in traffic, we were just knocking our head every weekend, saying, "We're, you know, we're killing ourselves down here, the valet can't be here, it's just in the way, and once you stop and you get to the next one, it's in the way." So we had them consolidate it for the last two years, and they were in the middle of Festival Plaza there. But we still weren't thrilled about that, because the truth is, that took up six of our metered spots, so we weren't getting paid for them, they were now making $30 a car to park there, and they were, you know, just using that as their personal valet for Pure Village. When this whole Pure Village thing started, the garage was supposed to be their centerpiece, they were supposed to use the garage, remember Mary Jane? They were supposed to use the garage to valet and have, almost like a New York City, where you go to a play, you pull up and you use the garage. So they were advised by me today, they need to come up with some type of new parking plan to utilize the garage as it was designed. And then this way, they won't even come into the center like you're saying, they'll have to come off of Landmark and go through the back, and they won't even go into Pure Village to people in valet.
I have a question.
Yes.
It's kind of really not related to this, but it is. I've had a lot of complaints about trucks parking on streets and law branch, and as you mentioned, people just come in here, dropping your trucks off for the weekend and taking off. That new program that we purchased?
Right.
Is there a way to register the trucks, even those big box trucks? Register them so that we know that those people who park them here live here?
No, I mean, you could absolutely do that.
Can we ball something with that program to keep track of them, like that, with the permit parking?
We would have to, I mean, I'm just, you know, thinking real quick about it, I have to think about it, but we'd have to issue some type of a residential parking in the area you're talking about, so, yeah.
This might be a zoning issue, right? Because I have taken a look at the zoning ordinance, but it's not unusual to have provisions in zoning ordinance that said you can't park commercial vehicles in residential areas, like you can't park a tractor trailer on a residential street if you're a truck driver.
Yeah, I've had a lot of complaints.
I'll be sure.
Do you have any idea?
I'll look at the ordinance, I will say that there is a big distinction between the vans, which are akin to a passenger vehicle.
You're talking about box trucks?
No, no, but the box trucks are a separate issue.
Sure, sure.
And, you know, a lot of municipalities prohibit the parking of those vehicles in the streets.
So I was going to say, I'm very familiar with the ordinance, so if you, the issue we have is, so you have a registered weight and then a gross vehicle weight, and the problem is, the general officer on the street is not going to know the rated or the manufacturer weight, and then the registered weight of these things, what ends up happening, they're overweight, they know what our thing is, and they register it below it, and then now, when they look it up on DMV, it's under it. So the way our ordinance reads now on both sides, zoning and in traffic enforcement, is it's the registered weight, and once we started, it was, there was one year, we probably issued 300 tickets, and everyone went the next time, cycle, and they registered under the threshold, but now we're not like the troopers that have the, you know, the weighing, you know, to weigh the vehicle and do all that kind of stuff, so the average guy, he looks it up and that's it, he keeps going.
Yeah, but that's, so...
That's just what it is now.
That's a traffic law, I'm talking about a zoning law.
It's in both, and they conflict, so there's, we have it right now in zoning and traffic.
Right.
Yeah.
So what, we can take another look at it and see how we can address that?
Yeah.
And the other issue is something is in the ordinance on those overhanging waters, too.
If it overhangs the bumper, yep.
What was that?
Overnight, overnight, nothing's supposed to overhang the bumpers when they're driving, so that generally what happens now is they, they'll take the scaffolding or drop them and then just park the truck, but they're not parked with everything on them.
And what is it, Lieutenant, right now, it's 48 hours of a truck or vehicle?
Yes.
By rights can?
If it doesn't move, correct. If we get, if we get a phone call, you know, we can't take, you know, their word for what happened, so if we get a call tonight, say right now, the guy will go out and sticker it, and then he'll do a cat entry, and then 48 hours from then, it can then be towed as an abandoned vehicle under ordinance.
So will that resolve the issue that I was talking about, people just leaving their trucks here if they don't live here?
Well, so over an entire weekend, yeah, you know, they'd have to, someone would have to call us when they dropped it, and then we would...
But overnight, it would, it doesn't belong there?
A single overnight, yeah, a single overnight.
I'm talking about like for the weekend, don't leave them.
Yeah, but we've already been looking at that ordinance, maybe myself and Mr. Jackson, because we were concerned about, it just, it doesn't read, it's not enforceable the way it reads.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Real quick, the next one, I just gave you a little blurb of what this program's going to look like if we roll it out. The idea is that the signage and decals, in the areas we do this, the signs and the decals will match, so there'll be permanent decals that will actually destroy if you peel them off, so you can't transfer them to a non-resident. So in an area, say we put, you know, the green signs up, and as the officers go by on the driver's side, rearmost window will be that green sticker, so the enforcing guy's very simple, there's a green sign and a green sticker, he can belong here, but if it's a different sticker, wrong color, or it doesn't have one, then they don't belong there, so just to give you guys an idea. Makes sense?
Yeah.
And then the last thing we just wanted to talk about, so the mayor had approached me about, you know, coming up with some type of a perk for residents in the beaches, so we looked at the Chandler Maps, I call it the Chandler Maps, I'm sorry, Broadway and Ocean Boulevard, where we have that paid parking behind White Chapel, and right now, it's $5 a day on weekdays, and then it's $10 on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. So we were trying to, or we're coming to you to get your approval, if myself and the administrator can work together and come up with some type of a single fee for residents that we can basically say, "Okay, for a one-time fee through this program, you can park there all season, or meter season while it's open." And this way, residents of the town will get a benefit that they don't have to pay $5 or $10 every time they go, it'll be a one-time.
So where that comes out of is, I think if you ask almost anybody in the city, I'm guessing all of us, I don't even try to enter Pure Village, you know, at night or during the day, right? So, you know, there's a lot of complaints about we can't park anywhere, so the thought was that where, what could we provide for our residents, either free or, you know, minimal charge, administrative fee, whereby they would have access to the beach, parking for low or no cost, and at the same time, we don't want to lose all the revenue, you know, in Pure Village, which, you know, on weekends is $3 an hour, $2 a week, which, as you know, is significant. So, you know, we discussed this idea of residents having access to Chandler and Maps, which on weekends gets crowded, and at least for this summer, moves out to the other, the other two lots, assume we will have that again, and if not, on weekdays, that lot's never usually full. So the idea would be what, similar decal then?
Similar decal, we'd create a resident line, you know, someone would just check if they had the decal that was approved, they go through and they park.
Park on the ocean front, go to the beach there, I mean, obviously, you know, I don't, I mean, obviously, this, you know, I, I don't, assume you don't want to park there if you're down the West End Beach. But if you want to go to any of the beaches, you know, in that general area, go to Pure Village as a resident, you just go into this park.
And how does that work?
So, so, you know, once we got the blessing.
Through the same system.
Yeah, through the same, and once we got the blessing, we put it out to the residents. Um, and they would just, we'd either help them or they can go online and sign up for it and then we'd start the process.
So what kind of a fee are you thinking about?
That, that's gonna be up to you guys. I mean, the one thing I will tell you is that, so as an aside, we right now, for the same exact service, offer it to, uh, workers in, in, um, in Pure Village, right? And I think, what was that, fifty dollars mayor?
Fifty.
Yeah, so we would want to do something better than that for the residents, obviously. But between Mr. Jackson and the mayor, you guys, that's something you would decide. You just have to tell me what to plug in and, and that's what the fee is.
Okay.
I would suggest, you know, the one thing is you should always do something because if you do nothing, then you just, everyone applies, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Any number, any number, Hitch? I, I'm serious, 'cause what popped out to me was ten. I thought that was a whole lot.
Ten for the whole scene?
Yeah, yeah.
Before you said fifty, I actually thought a hundred.
Now, now, yeah.
How much, how much is a beach? Uh, forty-seven bucks, uh, forty-six?
I think it's forty-nine, right? Forty-nine bucks.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah.
So what if we did like twenty-five dollars?
That's the number they were looking at.
You wanna tell them your anecdotal story from today?
Which one?
That you had downstairs after you left, the mayor and I, to talk about the.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, so it's, you know, after I left, I, I, you know, you know, the, the mayor, he's telling me, 'cause I, actually, that's what I said at first. The mayor said, oh, it's way too expensive. So I literally left the meeting like, am I that out of touch? Like, I, I thought I was crazy. So I went down to my staff downstairs and I got them all and I said, let me ask you guys a question. If I was to offer you guys the parking lot right there, what would you guys pay? And, yeah, and they live in town and you, you know, you're, what would you guys pay? And so one, the one girl got on her phone, started typing away and they're all, you know, thinking Stan Jubel was there, you know? And I said, I want you all to answer separately. So the first girl says two hundred dollars. I'm like, okay. Stan said, well, I'm cheap, I would do a hundred, you know? And then we just went back and forth. No one was under a hundred dollars of what they would be willing to pay, but, you know, it's, it's up to you. This, this is totally up to you guys.
That's true.
No, exactly, it's, it's totally up to you guys.
It's have to be less than the, the employee.
Yeah, it has to be less, my point is it has to be less than the employee one. If they're a resident, it's gotta be less than the.
We don't have to lock into it, but in other words, twenty-five sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Well, um, is there any possible movement with the fifty?
Is there weekend parking still or just weekday?
Keep in mind the fifty, there are children that are working, you know, they're sixteen, seventeen years old.
Okay, okay.
We're trying to help the kid, it's all for those kind of employees.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna do that.
How many of them are long branch, are those kids?
See, and, and so it's, it's an interesting question. So as I talked to them, the guy from Coney Waffle wanted to push this out. And I said, before you do this and push it out, the last thing I wanna do is have a kid that's a resident that now applies for the fifty dollars and we offer something that's cheaper, you know? So, so we're about to find out.
Why, what?
You're asking how many, we're about to find out.
I'm, I'm asking, why would you buy the fifty dollar one instead of buy the twenty-five dollar?
Because they don't know about it yet, that's what I'm saying.
Well, as soon as we tell them.
Correct, correct. But they already know about the fifty dollar one, 'cause they're, they're already starting the, the process of collecting.
But we have to think about people on fixed incomes too, that would like to go to the beach and.
Warren Rose, I'm sorry.
People who are on fixed income.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah. I mean, I don't know, but just, I thought it's twenty-five, if you all think that's reasonable. But, yeah, we don't have to decide right now.
Why, why wouldn't we make them the same, whether they're both fifty or they're both forty or whatever? Because, yeah, you're gonna, yeah, or both twenty-five, whatever. But it, you are gonna get into this, why would I buy the fifty dollars if I don't?
No, I, so no, I'm talking about the long branch resident. A long branch resident who's unemployed.
Yeah, a lot of employees are not long branch residents.
Okay, okay.
In other words, my fault was that, uh, it really, it shouldn't necessarily be revenue generating. It should be what, it, it for the residents, so what is the administrative cost to do that?
Okay.
You know? Mayor, also to answer the question, the reason the fifty's there, Pure Village has a certain amount that they do and it's fifty dollars. So we just matched theirs. We didn't come up with that number.
But we also have to remember, Officer Shirley surveyed some of his staff. They make pretty good money around here.
They were, they were mostly civilians, actually.
You can't go by that. Especially in the summertime, for one percent.
Yeah.
That was very good job.
Thank you.
Yeah. That was very good.
Very good.
That was good. So where, where do we go from here so we don't leave this town?
So I, I, if I can, I, I think if I was listening correctly, that we're gonna do all of these and then, uh, Chandler Map, sort of parking at twenty-five dollars, right? Is that, is that the?
What I'd like to do is.
Are there any objections to any of these recommendations?
No.
No.
And then if I could, I'd wanna just clean up some stuff, give it to you and then you can, it's, it's a whole ordinance that needs to get cleaned up.
I, I have a question about, um, Broadway. Parking on the street in Broadway? If, if you're a resident or even, uh, usually people from Chester or wherever walk, but those who drive, if they, you know, come out of their house to shop anywhere on Broadway, uh, the parking's already done. The beach, the beach goes and taking that over. And as far as you can, until you hit the water, it's just done. Can we, uh, have a parking for residents only or something in that area? Is that a possibility or a decal or something? My, my experience with downtown is I think that you wanna put a limit on it. Because what the, what the shop owners will tell you is that they don't want, they don't want a resident parking there all day anymore than they. They don't care whether they're a beachgoer or a resident, they don't want the, the spots blocked. So the thing, the way you handle that is you make it one hour parking or something. Because if you have a store downtown, what you want is you want those spots up, people continually open up, right? You don't want anybody to park there for, for four hours because then that blocks the spot from your store. So that, I don't think that you do resident parking there. I think what you do is you do some kind of, because the whole point of the parking, the whole point of the parking fees downtown is to keep those spots constantly turning over so that people can park there for the businesses. And if you do, by the way, if you do one hour parking, for instance, I'm not sure whether Lieutenant Shirley told me whether that's the right number or not, you're gonna stop the beachgoers from parking there, right?
It's something we need to do and it should probably be two only 'cause there's restaurants there.
Right.
So, two hour.
Even still.
We should do two hour parking in that area, absolutely.
Do you have a few, uh, I think a nail place and a couple, uh, beautician shops and so on?
That will actually help us because the people that are parking there, it will push them to the lots. And now the businesses can actually have, you know, the restaurants and grocery store. It'll cycle the vehicles.
Can we ask you a question? I'm sorry, Nina. Do you need to get no calls around the hospital area, on Dunbar and that area?
So, no, so that, what, that. We, we get one, Arthur Avenue.
Yeah, Arthur and Dunbar.
Yeah, so, so Arthur, we, that's already in the residential, uh, program and we already issue that to people. Um, but the other streets, we don't have a problem currently, we haven't issued one. Um, that was before Monmouth Medical put up the parking garage. If you remember before that, there was absolutely a problem in that area. Now that the garage is up, the problem's gone, except for Arthur. So, and Arthur is still one of the streets that we're gonna do this. These streets that, that you allowed me to enter will actually be under Arthur Avenue in the same ordinance. That's where it'll be.
And then ultimately, we could look at other streets as well. How did you isolate where you chose to do the surveys and things?
One was just based on complaints and calls, but also where restrictions already were current. Like, if, if a street didn't have a restriction, we didn't even look at it right now. You know, unless we got a complaint, so it's not like we went looking for problems. These were current, um, you know, ordinances that were changed in the last, say, five years and they had restrictions on roadways that we were getting complaints about.
Cause I noticed that Second Avenue's getting pretty packed during the summer as well.
Yeah.
And I don't think, um, that, uh, you know, people are abiding by the laws of parking, not parking so close to the intersections as well, so.
So, so we missed the boat with, coordinated with Public Works last year, but this year we're doing it early. All the corners are gonna be painted this year on Second on the cross so that they, so that the officers can clearly see that they have to stand back. It's our biggest view corridor issue that we have. You know, Second Avenue, people tend to go over the speed limit there. Um, and as people are crossing, they just, as two, two vehicles are coming different ways, they, you can see the accidents we're having, so. Yeah, so we, we, we work with Stan, we're gonna pick a day. Uh, because what has to happen is unfortunately, he's gotta come pick up whatever's there and then sweep it and then we can paint it. So, so we're gonna work together and get that done before.
Do you think we can, do you think we can also at some point poll the residents? Because, you know, like I said, there's a ton of cars parked on Second Avenue.
What would you wanna poll them for then?
Whether or not they won't permit parking.
Oh, well, that, that's up to you guys, you know, that's. All, all I can tell you is I would, just 'cause it's our first time around, I'd let us get this off the ground and work out the bugs before we spread the program. That's all I would suggest.
Yeah.
Because we don't know how it's gonna work yet. Nikki's great, believe me, I trust him on everything, but I would say let us, this is enough, we got a big chunk here.
Yeah, but if it works, I'd like to see.
Yeah, I know, right?
If it works, I'd like to see.
Yeah, and that's why we're doing this, there's no limit to the system.
Put them on the calendar for, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, as I say, we should, there's no, you know, it's open ended. But you know, actually, it's, it's, it's made me think of something which is unrelated, but you know, a few people have also said, like, for example, on Chelsea Avenue, and there's been others, I don't know, a little bit, a few that mentioned, but that sometimes, you know, uh, people will take up in essence what is two spaces. And so that if we had like line parking spaces, not metered parking spaces, but just people sort of respect those lines and that might, I don't know. Would you ever, I think, or that?
So I have, and we go back and forth about that, 'cause the problem you have with that is most of those areas are resident spots. And if someone parks wrong and now the other person pulls in and they're over the line, it's a ticket. Now, guys are ticketing residents for being parked over the line and you start dealing with those issues in residential areas and those may come back to you. So we absolutely could do it, but there's other, you know, every, every solution creates another problem.
Yeah.
And then sometimes where three could fit and, and we legally have to, you know, mark what it is. So if it's three smaller cars, maybe three fit there, well, now it's just gonna be two, 'cause that's a legal spot now. So it, it creates other problems.
I think it evens out.
Yeah, it.
You mean without the lines?
Yeah, 'cause with the lines, you end up having to do a twenty-three foot spot. So.
Without the lines, it's, it's a little worse sometimes.
Uh, what kind of timeline is this on to?
So the interesting thing is I'm just, you know, waiting for your guys' approval to move. And then, uh, there's a lot of information that's being entered in the system and they're giving us, you know, they said forty-five days and you know where we are right now, so I'm gonna push them as hard as I can. Uh, if it was, you know, I, I think we decided that we were gonna, um, start with the resident parking and the employee parking and get that going, since it's the quickest thing we can do, 'cause we need to start advertising that.
Right.
And then we'll move into the oceanfront stuff.
Okay.
You know, ocean and marine terrace and then work our way that way.
Yeah, and, um, it, the, you just mentioned, uh, to start advertising it. I think this is great, what, um, you guys are, are doing. And I think it deserves some PR of, you know, I'm thinking back to our town hall meeting way back when and, and when we talked about what's gonna make your, the summer, next summer on the shore better.
Right.
Traffic, parking, all that stuff. So the idea that, you know, you spoke to people, you listened, you responded, I, I think all this deserves, uh, you know, maybe our, our own story, putting it out there or something, but it's a really good story to put out there.
So let's just decide then, in order to, uh, so let's start the easiest one and is, do we all agree on that we should try to offer this parking option in, in, uh, to residents? And we just have to come up with a fee? Do we all agree with that?
Yes.
If it took about twenty-five dollars, I mean, I might as well just poll everyone now so we can just move forward.
I mean, I'm.
That's fine with me.
Are you good with twenty-five?
I don't have a vote, you guys do, I'm fine with anything you tell me. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
If it's only an administrative.
It's only administrative to get through, that, that'll pay for the system, so it's fine.
Doctor Stelly? Twenty-five?
Sometime.
Okay.
Okay, and then the other issue is what could possibly be done with this if everybody wanted to move forward by the summer? I mean, marine terrace obviously seems like.
Mr. Renault would be better. So if I get you, how long does a turnaround take? So if I got you the changes that need to be made for meetings and stuff.
If you give me a week, we should be able to turn around without a problem.
Is it just one meeting?
Well, no, we need two meetings.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, okay.
So, but we have meetings every, every two weeks, so it's.
If we got it immediately, as soon as we can do it, it's a month.
Like, I guess the point is if it's, even if it's not a memorial, dying, it's June fifteenth, whenever it is.
Right, it's for the, for the most part of the summer, you'll have it in place.
But with, with the not, am I okay to start working with the vendor to get it moving? We're just not, you know, so I can dual track it?
Yeah, you're lucky to do that part of it. And then if you can get me, you know, let's, let's try to, I, I don't think we'll make it for two weeks, but, 'cause you have some work to do, so.
I'm done, I, I have the ordinance done.
Okay, you have it done, right? So then you get to me and we can start to review it.
Okay, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Sure, are we all doing with that as well, though?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And, and could we just keep it on the list of some, somehow, you know, publicizing this besides to the residents and everything?
Yeah, of course.
Just 'cause it's a really good work that.
And then also we're gonna look into the ordinances about the trucks and all that, right?
Yeah, Nick and I will take a look at that also and see what it is that we can do. What's the desire? To try to prevent the, what are essentially commercial vehicles being? Now, you said they're dropped in the neighborhood, I don't, I don't under, it's not somebody who lives in the neighborhood and they bring home their box truck for the weekend? It's somebody that doesn't live in the neighborhood?
So the, the business owner lives out of town, it happens all, the business owner lives out of town. He knows that his, um, employee lives in Long Branch, his town has a restriction, we don't. And so he says, take the truck home with you today.
Okay, so we should put that, whatever that restriction is in his other town, we should put here. And if it means, no, I mean literally, if it means lowering the, their registered weight, as long as we don't pick up people's personal vehicles and we find that sweet spot, maybe we lower it so that we pick up more.
I just wanna know what type of vehicle the, the goal is to eliminate parking on the street.
I think we'd like to eliminate commercial vehicles from parking on the street. In residential areas.
We don't wanna hurt the, the local residents up in here for a long time, you know? We, we really wanna affect the ones that are registered to a different towns. But we have a lot of small companies that, we live in Long Branch and work out of Long Branch. And we, we don't wanna affect them, we don't wanna hurt them too much either, you know what I mean? Like, I, I had a business, a local business, and I parked in the street, I didn't have the big vans and stuff like that, but, you know, I had a commercial vehicle. And now if my car was registered to a different town, I'm a hundred percent for that. But if the car's not registered, is registered to Long Branch, I wouldn't bother them too much.
Well, the box trucks are a problem, that don't care where you live.
The trucks are a hundred percent, yes.
That's a problem.
Box truck, box trucks are for sure, but Nick, I think, so Maria makes a good point, but you have, it's, it's for us residents. You have to look, I have to look a little more careful because I, let me give you two examples of a complaint, okay? So there's, there's a, a constant complaint of somebody who obviously, I guess, works out of his house and has three vans, right? So again, we don't wanna be, we don't wanna hurt the guy who has one van, but if he now has three commercial vans that's taking up in front of three houses, you know, even if he is a resident, we gotta be careful. Another thing we get a lot of, or I've, I've received some calls on, are people who will put a van on the street and that van becomes their, their storage facility. So that'll sit there as long as it sits there, whether it's in a municipal lot or on the street. And then they pull up every morning, right, and take the stuff out and put old stuff on and whatever. So you, you know, it's, it's, it's complicated.
The other thing you have to be careful with the weight now is a lot of people that just run their own business, owner-occupied business and houses, they, they now have the Ford F-350s and their registered weights are right up around where you guys are talking about. And it's a guy that, that's his work and personal truck and that's what he drives. So you would be taking someone that's a, a business owner and you gotta be careful.
We don't have a total answer for you.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll tune it up.
Yeah, and, and the other problem is that if you have a business that you run out of your house, you have three vans, you probably violate the zoning ordinance on, on, in home businesses. You should probably ca, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a different story. 'Cause what you now, you said, well, you know, we don't wanna hurt that guy, but that guy's now operating a business out of his house. You know, what if he had, you know, he, he was running a cab company and had twenty cabs and he parked there? I mean, the answer is at some point in time, you now cross the, you now pass the, you know, uh, home business part of the zoning ordinance, you now have a different problem.
We have a guy, we have a guy on Avery Avenue that's, uh, doing his mechanic on Avery Avenue, I don't know if you heard about that, you heard about that, right? He got kicked out of the parking lot and now he's on the right of the street and he's changing all the brakes and buffers and everything right on the street.
Well, that's it. Fairly sorry, Nick and Lieutenant Shirley and I.
Lieutenant knows about it.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
That's it, that's it all the time.
We don't have a change in the ordinance. It's a few, but there's no change there.
And does, is he allowed to continue to do this?
No, he's not, he's doing that alone.
I mean, it's a zoning violation.
Zoning violation, he's not supposed to do that at all.
And do people that have businesses out of their homes have to get mercantile license of some type if they're running a business?
They're supposed to.
It's legit.
Sure.
Unless they're a licensed professional.
No, there's very limited amount of businesses you could do from your home.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Go from, sir.
Yeah, nice job.
Take care.
Mr. Renault?
Tree conservation, I apologize, I was supposed to circulate some form ordinances, but I did have an opportunity to talk to Nick about this a little bit. There are three different kinds of, um, ordinances that I think we're talking about here. We started off by talking about shade tree ordinances and my, I, my experience with shade tree commission strictly tree commissions strictly is that there's a statute with regards to them, most towns have gotten away from having them because they're cumbersome, and the accounting for them is cumbersome, so they generally have shade tree ordinances that govern what trees can be planted on public property and what you can, you know, whether or not you can, for instance, if you have a, there's a city tree in front of your house, whether or not you can cut it down or you can't cut it down, so there's those kind of, those kind of regulations. So tree conservation is a different, kind of a different ordinance, clearly, because that governs trees everywhere, including trees on private property, most important trees on private property. And the question with that is how far you want to your goal with it. I mean, there are some of those ordinances that literally, if you have a big tree in your backyard, if you want to take it down, you have to get a permit to take it down. So most of them seem to exempt that of, you know, one, you know, a single family lot, though you will have those circumstances where people will come in and have vacant lots and clear cut them. So generally, you try to tie it to the development part of it. And then the last is, of course, which is the easiest part of it, I think, is to require any large-scale developments that require a planning board or zoning board approval, a cyclone approval, to have a tree conservation plan in which they have to tag all trees, if it's over two inches in diameter, they have to either replace those trees with trees that are of a similar size, or they have to pay to a tree fund, which then will generate money for you to then plant trees in other places or on city parks or on, on trees, on streets. Nick, did I, I mean, that's really the all of the options, right?
Yeah, I agree, that's pretty much it, yes.
Yeah, so the council tells us kind of which direction we can go, we can draft these ordinances, are pretty similar from town to town. I don't know, Shannon, if you guys have anything to weigh in on, on, you know, it's an extra cost at the time of development, but it's, you know.
I personally prefer the third option, I think it's the easiest, and also gives you the largest opportunity to provide either landscaping onsite or on off-site locations.
So in other words, not go after just a single-family lot or restricting people from cutting down trees in their backyards for landscaping, but just dealing with, as a development point of view?
Yes.
That's definitely the best way to do it, too. I don't think that, yeah, because I, because otherwise you're gonna catch just regular homeowners.
I would maybe just push it, just if they require a permit for building, any kind of permit, demolition, building, or anything like that, I would require that. I mean, that's just a big-
New construction?
New construction, you know what I mean? Because they, you know, if you're dealing with just the developers, there's a lot of places that beautiful lots that they get cleared, they get cleared and-
You're talking about some infill lots?
Yes, I mean, that's just an opinion, because right now, if we're dealing with just developers, so that means anybody can come and build a single house, tear down all the trees, cut along all the trees, you know what I mean? And they got the right to it.
I agree.
That's just my opinion, you know what I mean?
In those circumstances, I find that the best ordinances require people to keep the trees outside of the-
Building envelope?
Building envelope, and, you know, it gives you the ability to save some larger trees and then still allows them to have a development footprint that's rational.
It prohibits clear cutting, essentially, that's what you, you don't want somebody going to pull those old trees on your, on your lot, and then build a house.
And, you know.
And it helps create the landscape buffers on the property lines.
Correct, okay.
And we had the environmental commission, they're, you know, conducting this study on which trees should, you know, be planted in this area that would live the longest. Are we somehow gonna correlate that information with, you know, when people come forward and, you know, for planning and demolition and all that, to say, look, and provide them with the rest? I mean, we think we should, you know?
Yeah, the ordinance I've seen have done that, approved trees, I don't know, did you have a question?
I was gonna say, I was gonna add, in our town, in our town where I live, we have an extensive ordinance, because they want to preserve the character of the town, so you can't, you can't, you need to get approval for a tree of a certain size, you need to get approval for so many trees, if you want to take down three, three or more trees on your property, you need to get approval. And, and it's good, as long as there's responsiveness in the process, right? If you're a homeowner, you get frustrated if you're not, if the municipality is not responding quick enough to your request.